Do you want to, um, grab?
No, I'm good.
How we doing now? We can really, Paul was in the house.
An hour is enough here.
Yeah, you're ready.
So I was waiting, saying, we'll wait for this.
We're up, so we've got this little kind of. Is it where the only thing that's.
Sit right here.
Okay, that works.
Make sure nothing gets out of hand.
Thanks.
It's a pistol. Pistol.
Yeah.
Prefer if this would load, but. Are we on? Are we on?
You're on.
All right, I will call to order the zoning board of appeals meeting for Wednesday, August 10th, 2022. To all persons interested in or affected by the actions of the zoning board of appeals, you are hereby notified pursuant to section 11 of chapter 48 of the general laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and all amendments thereto that a public hearing on the following appeals will be held on Wednesday, August 10th, 2022, at the time indicated. It is 7:04. Introduction of board members. I'm Jacob Dewey. David Hirsch is not present. Herb Bodensee.
I'm here.
Paul Pennard is not present. Todd Willantis.
Present.
Mark Hanson.
Present.
Aaron Webb.
Present.
And Denise Johnson.
Present.
Please note that this meeting is recorded and broadcast on channel 18 in accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, Section 20. I must inquire whether anyone is taping this meeting and to please make their presence known. All right, seeing none, we have no business, uh, no minutes tonight, and we have no old business. Our first new business item is appeal number 2022-037. MWV Associates LLC has petitioned for a variance from section 240-2418C, dimensional bulk and other requirements in HG Hyannis Gateway Zoning District. The petitioner seeks a variance from the minimum bulk regulations to clarify parcel records and assessing division lines pursuant to the plan prepared by Down Cape Engineering. The subject property is located at 195 Ridgewood Avenue, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 328 as parcel 073. It's located in the highway, uh, Hyannis Gateway HG Zoning District. We received a letter from Attorney Schultz requesting to continue this. Is that right, actually? This is. Until August 24th, 2022. So I need a motion to continue this item to.
So moved.
That meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So that is continued. Moving on to appeal number 2022-038. Molly McGregor, trustee of the Warehouse Corporation Hyannis Realty Trust, has petitioned to amend use variance number 2019-021, which granted relief from 240-32A Industrial Limited Zoning District to allow a multifamily residential apartment building. The petitioner seeks to amend use variance number 2019-021 to convert interior office use into an additional dwelling unit. The subject property is located at 206 Breed's Hill Road, Barnstable, Massachusetts, as shown on assessor's map 314 as parcel 025. It's located in the Industrial Limited IND LTD zoning district. So sitting on that tonight will be our regular members, uh, which is myself, Mark, Herb, and we'll have two alternates. Aaron, do you want to sit on this?
Sure.
Denise, you want to sit on this?
Sure.
All right, so I have Aaron and Denise on this.
Great.
Attorney Cox, whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Eliza Cox. I'm an attorney with Nuttner McLennan &amp; Fish here this evening on behalf of the applicant, which is 206 Breed's Hill LLC, which is the lessy of this property. Joining me this evening is Mr. Joe Keller, who is the manager of that LLC, and Jessica Silver, who works for Keller Companies, is also here this evening. The property that is the subject of this application is addressed 206 Breed's Hill Road in Barnstable. It's an approximately 2.26 acre parcel that has frontage on Breed's Hill Road and also on Independence Drive. It's located in the industrial and industrial limited zoning districts and then also within the AP and WP overlay districts. The property is presently developed with a three-story apartment building, together with associated site improvements, parking, landscaping, access egress. As some of you may recall, this property was before the board in 2019, and there are two zoning decisions that benefit the property. One is appeal number 2019-21, which is the one that we're seeking to modify. That is a use variance that authorized multifamily use on this site. And then the second sort of sister decision was also issued in the same date. 2019-22 was a variance that authorized certain dimensional relief height and some of the screening requirements. We're not seeking, and we don't need to modify that decision with this request. Just by, by way of background, as I'm sure this board is well aware, there is and has been for some time a tremendous demand for housing on the Cape and in Barnstable, particularly rental apartments, and that's what exists on this site now. In fact, Keller Companies, which owns and operates several multifamily developments, Jessica Silver, who's here, told me today that she receives calls almost every day from people looking for apartments to rent, and at this particular site, they have a waitlist of over 30 people looking for apartments, again exemplifying the tremendous demand. In response to that demand, my client recently converted on the second floor of this building some interior space that had been previously used as an office or designed as an office, but not used as an office, into a studio apartment. And in response to him doing so, the building department sent a communication indicating that it would be necessary to come back to this board to modify the existing use variance, which is why we are here this evening. In reviewing the prior use variance decision, I think it's a bit of a gray area as to whether or not that modification is needed, but we didn't appeal the building commissioner's decision sending us here and instead sought the relief that they asked us to file for, which is to amend the existing use variance to authorize one additional studio unit. And the reason, I guess, I say that I think this is a bit of a gray area is that in looking at that use variance, there are only two instances that I saw where it references the number of units, and they're all in the background section of the decision. If you look at the findings of the decision, the findings do not indicate or limit a certain number of units. Rather, the findings and the first, right before the findings, it says that the board made the following findings of fact in variance number 201921, comma, a request to allow a multi-unit residential development. And then again, none of the findings actually stipulate a certain limit. Same thing in the conditions. In the conditions of the decision, there's nothing in there that limits or conditions the approval to a certain number of units. Condition one, for example, provides that use variance 2019-21 is granted to Keller Company, Inc., to allow for a multifamily residential development at 206 Breed's Hill Road. In addition, there was no floor plan that was provided or included at the time in 2019. There were elevation plans. Those aren't changing with this request. There was a site plan, which I do acknowledge in the parking table of the site plan. It did list 29 units and then did the parking calculation based on that. But the condition recognizing the site plan says the development shall be in substantial conformance, and so, I mean, to me, there's some question of 29 versus 30, whether that's still in substantial conformance with the site plan. Nonetheless, as I said, we're not here to argue whether or not we need to be here. We did file for a modification, and so we're asking the board tonight to amend the decision to clarify that 30 units of multifamily housing may be permitted on the site. In connection with this request, I would suggest to you that there is no detriment or derogation, there's no changes proposed to the exterior of the building. We are proposing to add two new parking spaces to the site so that the required number of parking spaces for 30 units will be maintained on the site. And my client is fully prepared to work with the building department to deal with any interior code issues that need to be modified in order to meet all of the code requirements. With respect to, to the relief, I, I, I think adding this additional unit will help with demand. Again, I told you the significant waitlist that exists. In addition, the price of this studio unit is a lot less than the other prices of the units in the building, so it allows for sort of a more affordability within the site. It does not change the required number of affordable units that are required for the site, which are met. The town's inclusionary bylaw requires 10% of units to be affordable, which they round up at 29, so it was three units are required. At 30 units, still three units are required, so there is no change with that, that requirement with this additional studio unit. Finally, with respect to the decision, we've read the staff report. We're fine with all of the conditions. I understand Jim has one additional one that he wants to suggest to the board, which we would be fine with as well. In terms of what the board must find, I, because we're not changing the nature of the relief, the board previously, previously authorized multifamily on the site, and we're still looking to keep multifamily on the site. I don't think you need to go through all of the variance conditions in that the nature of the relief isn't requesting, the extent of the relief isn't requesting, and there's no additional relief that's needed. The decision already authorizes multifamily housing on the site. So what I think the board must, should do, if you're so inclined, and we hope you are, is simply find that providing one additional studio unit within the existing building doesn't change the relief that was previously provided and doesn't result in any substantial detriment or derogation. I think that's all that's required in order to codify in an amended decision this proposed change. I guess I'd leave it at that. My client is here if you have any questions. I'm here if you have any questions, but it's really a pretty straightforward request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone from the board have questions for Attorney Cox?
Well, you actually answered both of my questions about 40B and parking, so.
Great, thank you.
I have nothing to say.
I just have a question. So if this had come on the original request, this would have gone to the Cape Cod Commission?
Yes, I think that's right.
So why now we're, so now we're pushing it to 30, how are we bypassing the Cape Cod Commission on this?
Well, I mean, I think the board, so the Cape Cod Commission has an anti-segmentation, they're adding one unit right now. There is no definition in the Cape Cod Commission regulations as to what is and isn't segmentation. So I guess the question is, was there a purposeful segmentation to avoid the commission back in 2019? I would suggest to you, no, and Mr. Keller can actually provide you some additional information if you're interested as to the evolution, as to why this unit was changed in order to now have it be a studio unit. But I think it really comes down to whether there was an intentional segmentation of this project to avoid commission review. Several years have passed since this project was originally proposed. From our perspective, there is no intentional segmentation.
Has there been any conversation with, with the commission on any?
We, I haven't spoken with the commission.
Okay. I guess that would be my concern, that we don't have sort of a letter from them saying, yes, we agree, we don't have any jurisdiction here. I just would prefer that that had been, you know, sort of checked with them first. And then, I guess, you know, going back to when we did debate this, is the, does the other structure that we were sort of referenced to in this have a similar office in it? It's exactly the same, the carriage?
The one at Mary Dunn and, I don't know the answer to that. Do you want to come up?
Should I come up?
Yeah.
Joseph Keller, Keller Company. When we built Carriage House, we inherited a giant empty space, which, we didn't know why the architect designed it, and we didn't really pick it up when, when we looked at the plans, but when the building got built, here was this, this big empty room. It wasn't underground, it wasn't a basement or anything, and so we, we contemplated trying to turn that into another unit, but we decided to just use it for storage. And right now, it's, you know, it's been a good storage area, but it is on the ground floor, and it does have its own door access outside, so it's, it's useful as storage. Then, when this building got built, it was supposed to be a duplicate of the other one. However, because of the site condition, instead of having an entrance on both ends into the building with parking on both ends, which I prefer because, you know, if you come into the middle, it can be a hassle sometimes to go down a long hall, it's a lot easier to be able to come in. So I was, anyway, in this case, it's a center entrance. So somehow, after the building got built, there wasn't this first floor, a big empty room, it was on the second floor. And I asked the architect what it was for, and, and they really didn't have any explanation, but we decided to try to make like an office out of it, but then COVID hit, and nobody was using it, so, and it didn't have a bathroom. So then we decided to turn it into a function room and put a bathroom and a kitchen in it, kitchenette. And then COVID, nobody was using that either, so someone, but it's on the second floor also, so it wouldn't have been a good place for self-storage. So someone at my church, Paul Stringer, I don't know if anybody knows the Stringer family, he came up to me and said, hey, Joe, do you have a, a unit for my, my daughter? She, you know, she has a baby and, and is living by herself, and she doesn't, she's living with us. So I said, well, we have this, this room, and it's got a bathroom and a kitchen, and, you know, maybe, and, and he said she couldn't afford much rent either, so we couldn't rent her a two-bedroom unit. So I said, well, maybe we could put her in there and temporarily and, and until, you know, she can, you know, find another place, which I don't think she's going to be able to now, it's, it's worse. And so that's the evolution of it.
Okay.
But I mean, to go to the Cape Cod Commission, I mean, I think you understand what, what that would entail. I mean, I might as well just, you know, not even be here because it would, it would be years and years and traffic mitigation and everything else, so I'm hoping to avoid that.
I just, I just don't want to be in a position where we're overstepping.
Yeah.
Something that, you know.
Okay, well, I'll leave that, let me, Eliza has an answer for that one. Thank you.
I, I, the way the commission regulations work, towns can refer projects to the commission if they think it exceeds one of the thresholds, or the commission can grab a project if it, they think a threshold has been hidden, it hasn't been referred. Again, I, I think the question is, when this came forward, was there an intention to segment review into two different projects in order to avoid commission review? You've just heard from my client as to how this unit came to be. It was originally used as something else, and then as a result of COVID and other conditions, the function no longer worked for which it was originally constructed for. So I would suggest to you, there is no segmentation.
But it was designed and built intentionally to be at the 29, to maintain underneath the commission's purpose?
Well, it was designed, as, as Mr. Keller said, based on a prior design that had previously been very successful for him and another site, and there are efficiencies when you duplicate designs from other sites rather than sort of redesigning as a whole.
Anyone else from the board have questions?
I do. Is there any other, oh, I'm sorry.
Is there any other vacant space within the building? Or is this it? This is the last unspoken?
This is it.
This is?
Plus, it costs, it costs a lot of money to put in the bathroom and the kitchen.
Of course, yep. And what about the, and what is the square footage of the particular space we're talking?
I'm gonna guess it's about 400 square feet.
Gotcha.
We have, we have an architect drew up a plan.
I do, I do have a little sketch plan that an architect prepared, which I can submit as well for the record, showing the layout of the space.
If it was on the ground floor, there might be another use for storage, but not on the second floor.
So I'm, I wasn't a part of this when it shook down in 2019. Is there another building that has this, a similar storage unit that's still being used as storage in the same context of what we're talking about, or are we just talking about this one particular address?
Well, they don't, the two projects don't really, I mean.
Yeah, the reference was, so there was, the project that Arvin Bill is the same building, and sort of when he was getting this approved, a lot of the discussion was that it was copying the pre-existing, the other building that he'd already built.
Okay.
That was a sort of a big part of the back and forth on it.
Gotcha. But we're just talking about this one particular, this building, not the other building, not the other storage.
Other building staying at 29, as far as we know.
Yep, as of now.
Yep.
And just a quick question, is this, so is this unit presently occupied?
Yes.
It is, okay. And is, and is this, is this going to be slated as a studio, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Studio, okay.
It'll be the only studio in the building.
Right.
Anyone else?
I see it like, somebody had a garage and they turned the garage into a.
All right, if there's no one else from the board, we'll open for public comment. I don't think we received anything on this, no. Is anyone here to speak for public comment? Jim, did you have anything you wanted to add from staff?
Good evening, guys. Jim Kupfer, Senior Planner, Planning and Development. Just simply, as Eliza touched on, if this board's willing to consider this, a recommendation for a potential condition that wasn't in the staff report, as Eliza touched on in the first decision, there is a bit of a gray area in terms of how many units were allowed, so codifying that in a condition, and I could provide some recommended language that a potential condition would be a total dwelling units shall increase from 29 to 30 units. No additional units shall be added without further relief from this board or an amendment of this decision, just to clarify that and, and put it down firmly. That's all.
And then, did you have any comments on the Cape Cod Commission? I mean, do you, you feel comfortable that we're okay to?
Right, so the, I know the building commissioner has looked at this, and to my understanding, he did not provide us with a referral to the commission.
Okay. All right, so I'll make a motion to close public comment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so that brings it back to the board for any discussion deliberation. Go ahead, Mark.
Just a quick thought, sort of on that same idea on just adding that maybe, and I don't know now that, you now have scaled floor plans, correct, for this building?
Yes.
Okay, so my thought is that in the decision, it references a 2A and B, that, that referenced the, the site plans and the elevations. I think it would be pertinent to add maybe a 2C that referenced the floor plans as existing and, and whatever this gets drawn into, as far, just to have something on record and to call out the number of units. And, yeah, that's the only thing I had. Thank you.
So, Mark, would you like to make findings, if anyone else doesn't have any?
No, I just, I just think that the Cape Cod Commission has been green-flagging so much development in light of the housing problem that I don't even know why this needs an approval, but I guess the technicality of the building commissioner, it does.
You good, Mark?
Sorry, the internet's kind of slow. Does anybody have it in front? What are we doing for number one?
I mean, I, Attorney Cox felt that we didn't have to find full variance conditions, findings?
Oh, okay.
So that we can do it as a minor modification to the existing.
Okay.
Variance that was granted.
Okay, so the, I think we can try that. All right. With regard to variance number 2022-038, McGregor Warehouse Corp., modification of use variance number 2019-021, which granted relief from section 240-32 to convert approximately 576 square feet of interior office use to additional dwelling unit. Molly McGregor, trustee of Warehouse Corporation Hyannis Realty Trust, has petitioned to amend use variance number 2019-21, which granted relief from 240-32A Industrial Limited Zoning District to allow a multifamily residential apartment building. The petitioner seeks to amend use variance number 2019-021 to convert interior office use into an additional dwelling unit. Subject property is located at 206 Breed's Hill Road, Barnstable, Mass. The variance findings are that we are seeing that this is a minor, a minor variance change has been demonstrated, that it's of no detriment to the, to the zoning and to the initial intent of the initial decision, and that we find, we would find that, that again, this would be a benefit to, to public housing and in addition, and again, would not substantially derogate from the initial use or intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance.
All right. Those are your variance findings?
Those are my variance findings.
We'll take a vote on the findings, all those, oh, sorry, we need a second.
I'll second that.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? So now you have some conditions.
I do. I have referencing staff reports dated July 29th, 2022. I have suggestion, suggested variance conditions number one, two, and three, also with the addition in, of a 2C to the variance that references the floor plans provided to staff, and also showing a full draw of the proposed unit. Also, number, actually, does that, would that come as a number four? Also, number, actually, does that, would that come as a number four? And, and also number four, suggested conditions from town planning, senior town planner. Thank you. Those are my variance conditions.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. So you're all set?
Great, thank you very much. Have a great night.
All right, so moving on to Appeal Number 2022-039, 157 Thornton Drive LLC has applied for a special permit pursuant to Section 240-93B, expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming structure, and to Section 240-57, reduction in parking. The applicant seeks to construct an approximately 2,002 square foot storage addition to the southern end of the existing building. The existing structure is non-conforming to numerous dimensional parking and screening requirements, and the proposed expansion will also be non-conforming to dimensional parking and screening requirements. The subject property is located at 157 Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map 267 as Parcel 019. It's located in the Industrial IND Zoning District. This is to be re-advertised for the September 14th, 2022, meeting. Do we need to continue it, or just, it's just being re-advertised? Okay, so that is being re-advertised, and then in Appeal Number 2022-040, 157 Thornton Drive LLC has petitioned for a variance from Section 240-33E, rear yard setback, lot coverage, and Section 240-33F, special screening, Section 240-56, parking schedule, and Section 240-57, reduction of parking. The applicant seeks to construct an approximately 2,002 square foot storage addition to the southern end of the existing building, which will intensify existing non-conforming setback, lot coverage, screening, and parking demand. The subject property is located at 157 Thornton Drive, Hyannis, Massachusetts, as shown on Assessor's Map 267 as Parcel 019. It's located in the Industrial IND Zoning District. This also is going to be re-advertised for the September 14th, 2022, meeting. Correspondence, we received planning board meeting notification and transmittal of a regulatory agreement application. It's regulatory agreement number 2022-001, S&amp;C Realty Investment Co., LLC, at 442 Main Street, Hyannis, Massachusetts. That hearing is going to be August 18th, 2022, at 7:00 PM. And I don't believe we have any matters reasonably anticipated, not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours before the meeting? We have upcoming meetings, August 24th, September 14th, and September 28th, 2022. Anything relevant we should know?
So is the 24th, are we starting Zoom?
So 24th will be Zoom, and then the plan is 14th to be in person, and then 28th will be Zoom, and then we'll figure out our one meeting a month, meetings that come after that.
Okay.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.